Anyone at the table care to dance or sing?
Oh wait, I'm seeing some action.
Here we go.
I can see and hear you now.
All right, if you're, mute your laptops, please. The last thing I want to do is hear myself twice. All right, since we are on the roll now, you will not have to sing and dance, we will call the roll.
Michael Branda here.
Danielle Drow here.
Dr. Bruce Fletcher.
Here.
Beth Maki, Hupagner.
Here.
Richard Laverrier.
Amy Promadis.
Here.
Sam Sharma.
Here.
Richard's here, by the way, if you missed me.
Jessica Weaver.
Here.
Anastasia Yeh.
She said here, yep. Very good, we will move on now to item B, the presentation of awards and proclamations. First up is our resolution honoring our Newington teachers. I saw her come in, hello Holly, come on up, and I'm going to read the proclamation while you're coming up. Whereas Tuesday, May 3rd, 2022 has been proclaimed as Newington Teacher Appreciation Day, and whereas the Newington Public School System is committed to honoring its teachers and recognizing their contributions to the educational system, and whereas the Newington Public School Teachers are well qualified, very dedicated, and are responsible for the shaping of minds of future citizens, and whereas the Newington Public School Teachers provide instructional opportunities that help prepare the students for the demands of the changing workplace environment, and whereas the Newington Public School Teachers help students understand the democratic principles that built this nation and how those foundations of freedom are serving as hope for people around the world, and whereas the commitment of the Newington Public School Teachers to providing the best education possible for their students is exemplary, and it is the desire of the Board of Education, the teacher should be made aware of their appreciation. Thereby, we do hereby proclaim Tuesday, May 3rd, 2022 as Newington Teacher Appreciation Day. Be it resolved that we urge all of the citizens of our community to join with us in actively expressing gratitude to Newington teachers who represent an investment in excellence in our community. Be it further resolved that the Secretary of the Newington Board of Education is directed to spread this resolution upon the minutes of this meeting and to provide a suitable copy to the President of the Newington Teachers Association. So, thank you, give them a hand. Thank you very much, and congratulations. Congratulations to you. And I'll let you speak, I'll hand this off to you after. You won't say anything, come on.
I just want to say on behalf of the Newington Teachers Association and all of our members, thank you to the Board of Education for all the support you give us that allows us to do our best work with students in the classroom. I'm pleased to be joined this evening by Setsuko Pidgen. When I first started in Newington, Setsuko was already an experienced math teacher in the department, and I have been thrilled to work hand in hand with her in order to learn more and grow and to work with our students. So, she happily joined me this evening, thank you so much. Like I said, we do our best work with students because we know that you work hard behind the scenes to support us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll let you hold that up, I'm going to shake your hand once again, and I'm going to present that to you. Anybody want to take a picture for them?
I'm going to ask Deb Craig to do that. Should I use my, uh? We're having all kinds of technical difficulties, please stand by.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. On the Zoom, okay. Before we go on to the paraeducators, I'm going to ask if there are any board members that would like to address the teachers. Ms. Hupagner.
Just wanted to say, uh, thank you. Some of us sitting at this table are products of Newington Public Schools and have benefited so immensely from the education that we got here in Newington, which is why we're back at it. I am so excited, though, I don't want my little ones to grow up yet. I'm so excited for them to attend school in Newington. My son goes to the preschool at Patterson, he tells everybody, "I go to Newington schools." So, thank you for all you do, you are truly changing lives every day.
Thank you.
Dr. Fletcher knows to look to me. This is, of course, one of our annual resolutions, but I think it's one of the necessary ones. I don't think we can say enough of our appreciation for all of our teachers. I think, we keep saying, you know, like, during the past two years, it just put a spotlight into what our teachers are, not only to our students, but to our entire community. So, we as a board are truly grateful, me as a former student is a truly grateful. Ms. Pidgen was actually Student Council Advisor, so I just want to give a shout out because that was my first year at Student Council and probably wouldn't be on this board or weren't for just those things. So, the impact you have not only in the classroom, but also outside of the classroom. We know you put in so many more hours than just the 7:00 AM to 2:00. You know, that is very clear to all of us, and I just want to express my one appreciation, but on behalf of the board, you know, May 3rd, appreciate you guys.
Thank you very much, and online we have Sam Sharma.
I just want to thank all the teachers and the paraeducators in our district. So, thank you for choosing to, you know, teach in our district, and I know how hard it is, I know, me and my wife's a teacher, so I know it's long hours, 14 plus hours a day. So, you know, we really appreciate what you, you know, what you all do. So, thanks a lot, and, you know, thank you for going above and beyond.
Very good, anyone else? Ms. Parodi.
I will just echo, thank you. Thank you for everything you do, and I know there are educators on the board, and they've said time and time again, and I've heard all, you know, every teacher say that this year has been one of the hardest of the pandemic. So, thank you for continuing to be there for the students. My kids are at the middle and elementary school level, and, you know, all of their teachers, not just their classroom teachers, but everybody has been so supportive, and it's just wonderful, so thank you, everything you do.
Thank you. Ms. Droste.
Yeah, thanks, Fred. So, thank you all, and please pass on to everyone, all the other teachers, we know how hard it is, and one of the things I love is hearing all of the stories, especially since my kids have been in high school. You guys have some funny stories up there. So, they come home and they share with us, and I love, it means you're making a connection with them, and that is the most important thing, it's more important than the education. It's actually so important for kids to feel connected, and I love how many stories my kids share with me, so thank you for all that you do.
So, I wanted to also put in my accolades for the teachers. I, many of you know Governor Lamont was at the high school today, and he made a big point of stating in his visits to various classrooms that he wanted to acknowledge the hard work of our teachers, what an important job it was. He actually went into a few classes and asked how kids if they were planning on being a teacher, and he was just really there to celebrate teachers, in my opinion, and he was able to meet Ms. Maki along the way. In fact, the head of the State Teachers Union joined the committee today, and as we walked around the school, Kate Dias, I didn't know she was a math teacher, so we were comparing notes about Pi Day and everything else, but anyway. All in all, a great day, but also an important day to acknowledge our teachers and the kind of unbelievable work they've had to do these last two years under very stressful circumstances, thank you.
All right, Mr. Laverrier.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I was at the high school today, it was really great to see. The teachers did a great job. Our students at Newington High are really becoming well-adjusted young adults, and I'm proud of the education we're, we're providing them and allowing them to, you know, take reins in their life, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else at the table? Okay, seeing that there is no one else, I am going to move on to our next resolution honoring the Newington Paraeducators. And receiving this reward tonight will be Merrillina Giulioso, and she is online with us. So, whereas Tuesday, May 3rd, 2022 has been proclaimed as Newington Paraeducator Appreciation Day, and whereas the Newington Public School System is committed to honoring its paraeducators and recognizing their contributions to the educational system, and whereas the Newington Public School Paraeducators are well qualified, very dedicated, and maintain a close working relationship with students, school, staff, and parents, and whereas the Newington Public School Paraeducators provide assistance, direction, and guidance to students under the direction of special education and regular education teachers, and whereas the Newington Public School Paraeducators reinforce skills, assist students in completing work using technology, organizing, and assisting with physical needs and personal care, and whereas the Newington Public School Paraeducators contribute to the success of the entire school system and are always willing to go above and beyond their duties. Thereby, we do hereby proclaim Tuesday, May 3rd, 2022 as Newington Paraeducator Appreciation Day. Be it resolved that we urge all of the citizens of our community to join with us in actively expressing gratitude to Newington Paraeducators who represent an investment in excellence in our community. Be it further resolved that the Secretary of the Newington Board of Education is directed to spread this resolution upon the minutes of this meeting and to provide a suitable copy for presentation. So, on behalf of the Newington Board of Education, it is an honor and a privilege to present this to you and all of the paraeducators, Ms. Giulioso.
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. Thank you again for this opportunity to accept the recognition on behalf of the paraeducators. And Dr. Fletcher, I know that you personally can speak to how our para-professionals go above and beyond every day. Our paraeducators really do work hand in hand and side by side with our teachers and our administrators, and we thank and value them for their contribution every day, so thank you.
All right, thank you. And I want to thank all the paraeducators for the hard work that they do in the support of their teachers, but also recognizing that, you know, they do go above and beyond, and oftentimes unrecognized, but tonight we recognize them. Anyone else here care to speak? Ms. Droste.
I'm going to speak on behalf of myself as a teacher right now, not a board member, and I want to thank all of the paraeducators out there. And I, I love my paraeducators, I can't leave the building without giving them a hug. I see them in the morning and they bring a smile to my face, and it's because they make the students' lives so much better. And we could not be educators without paraeducators, and I, and I kind of feel like, did you accept this award a couple of years ago, were you here?
Two different times.
I do remember that, because I remember saying about Dr. Fletcher that I can remember Dr. Fletcher walking into the high school while I was dropping off my children, and my kid's going, "That man's such the G," not quite sure what that means, but, but, um, I didn't know, I didn't- I didn't know, I didn't know, I didn't know who he was. But the fact that my, my own children who, who didn't receive services from a paraeducator, but knew who they were, knew that they were educators. I hate the word para in front of it because they really are just educators. And I'm, I'm doing a Jess Weaver and just talking a lot right now. But I just love, love, love paraeducators. So thank you for all that you do.
Thank you very much. Mr. Branda.
So I didn't speak before and I wasn't a known teacher. Teachers, I of course do. I think honestly, we should be, is that working?
Yeah.
Oh, cool. There we go. All right, cool. Every day should be Teacher Appreciation Day in this district. And I agree with Ms. Droste that para and paraeducator, you know, they are educators. And I think honestly, the state, I know there's a lot going on right now with paraeducators. And I actually saw Representative Turco posted a picture of a parent that testified today on the state. So I just think that there's a lot that the state can do to better support the parents. And, and I think quite honestly, there's a lot that this town hopefully is gonna be able to do after the state hopefully backs them. And I think the same can go for teachers. So, you know, my appreciation is for the work that all of you do every day for our students, for one another, like Ms. Droste said, you know, it is a team effort. But I just hope that someday soon, our appreciation goes a little bit further than just, you know, thanking you and just showing you with our actions at the state level, at the town level, that we appreciate you and we, and we support you in your efforts that you're doing in the classroom. Thanks.
All right, and thank you. Sam Sharma.
Oh, I just want to quickly thank like all the, all the paraeducators. I mean, I know how it is. I worked as a substitute. I worked as a sub, so I know how it is. You know, so we really appreciate what you guys do and, you know, thank you for everything, you know, we really appreciate it. Thanks a lot.
All right, thank you. And Anastasia Yopp.
Hi, I just want to say thank you so much to all the paraeducators. I know my son works with one, you know, daily in his class. And, you know, I don't know, you know, where he'd be without his. And thank you so much for everything. I really do appreciate everything you guys do.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Weaver.
All right, well, I mean, I told you that I'm not gonna do Jessica Weaver then. I'll just do, I don't know. But I'll just say, I think one of the things that was important to us was always honoring certain people on certain days. But I think one of the things we discussed that Dr. Fletcher pointed out was that I think putting paraeducators on the same level because they really are our educators as well. I think it's really important to signify how important that significance is for us. So I think it's important that we acknowledge you, we support you. I echo both what previous board members have said. We appreciate all that you do, but we can always do more. And I think that's the actions, probably the model you use every day as well. We always are doing our best we can, but can always do more. And I want to just thank Marilena in particular for always coming to our board meetings with so much of the education side of it, not just for our board members, but for our public. Because I think oftentimes it's one of those gray areas that not all of the laytown people know about. So I think it's just one of those things that provides more transparency, but also shows the incredible efforts that our paraeducators are doing. I know I learn everything, I learned so much every meeting we have when you come and present because of all the incredible factoids you have. It seems like every year that seems to be growing and growing. So just want to say in particular, thank you for showing us as a board, but as a community at large, how important paraeducator roles are. Thank you.
All right, thank you. In defense of the term para, I'm gonna give you a quick word lesson. The word para means to come along beside. It doesn't mean to be inferior to or superior to. It just means that you come alongside and you, you work in partnership with somebody. That is one of the main meanings of the word para from the Greek usage. So to talk about us and myself formerly as a paraeducator, it's actually a good term to be used because it means we're coming alongside wherever we are needed and we supply help. Okay, word lesson is over. I've been called a word nerd, so please. Anyone else at the table care to speak? Seeing that there is no one else, I want to thank you all very much for your participation in that. And we are going to move on to Agenda Item C, which is public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities. You can do it here in person by telephone. The phone number is 860-665-8659. We do limit civil participation to three minutes. So we ask you to be aware of that, and I will be timing that. So is there anyone in the room from the public that wishes to speak? No one in the room? Please come to the end of the table. State your name and your address for us.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Shilpa Gohill and I stay at 9B Children, Rocky Hill. First of all, I would like to congratulate the teachers and paraeducators. I can relate everything because my, I'm working as a specialized paraeducator at Rocky Hill High School, I mean, Rocky School. So everything you said, I can relate it to very much. I'm here to represent the APS charities, which is based out of Newington. As a nonprofit organization, we lead various events throughout the local communities and as well as the world in the category of humanitarian relief, education, environmental protection. And then we have a community empowerment events too. This Sunday, we are having a health awareness lecture at Temple in Newington. In locally in 2021, for the town of Newington, we have donated 1,500 food items to the town food pantry. And we have been doing that for a long time. And we have also donated $1,000 to Rocky Hill Education Foundation, which is a nonprofit too. And those organizations, they support the STEM projects, which are piloted by Rocky Hill Education System, which are not funded by them, but they do like the organization fund too. And then we did a walkathon last year, and we have been doing walkathon for a long time. And we have been supporting Newington Police Department and Newington Fire Department also with those proceeds. And I would like to invite you and all the board members to our walkathon, which is on May 15th. And I would, I have another member of my organization which would like to speak too. He's online.
Hi, can you guys hear me okay?
We can hear you.
All right, this is Vascha Pandya. I reside in Norwich, Connecticut. But I volunteer over at Newington, APS Temple and APS Charities. So I'm there on the weekends. So yeah, basically, we wanted to extend our invite to everyone, to the Board of Education. And this is a family event, so it's open to everyone. And it's going to be benefiting Susan Coman, as Shilpa had mentioned, and also Newington Police Department and Newington Fire Department. So we've been, you know, just wanted to extend this out to everyone and especially give you guys an invitation and anything you could do to support this since it's going back to the community and town, local community of Newington.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Please do. All right, let me see if I can pull this up. I don't see any participation online. Anyone else in the room from the public? Okay, seeing that there aren't any more and there are no calls that have come in, we're gonna go on to item number D, which is our consent agenda. We are going to be looking for a motion to approve the minutes of March 30th and of April 6.
We haven't done, I'm making it up again.
Make it up.
Okay, cool. Motion to approve the minutes from March 30th, 2022, regular Board of Education meeting.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion on the approval of the minutes? Seeing none, I'm gonna ask the clerk to please call the roll for a vote.
Michael Miranda.
Yes.
Danielle Droes.
Yes.
Dr. Bruce Fletcher.
Yes.
Beth Nike Hutt-Vagner.
Yes.
Richard Laverrier. Amy Parati.
Yes.
Sam Sharma.
Yes.
Jessica Weaver.
Yes.
Anastasia Yopp.
Yes.
The motion passed eight zero.
Yeah, he's not online. Yeah. Okay, so the motion has passed eight zero. Take a note here. Very good. Thank you all very much.
Yep, I only just wanted to, I thought we'd do them separate. Sorry.
Oh, okay.
I'm gonna do another motion.
Last time, we did them both together.
I'm changing things up a little. Living life on the wild side.
I didn't bring any change, so I'm not paying attention.
Okay. All right, move the Newington Board of Education, approve the minutes from April 6, 2022, regular Board of Education meeting.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. All right. Any discussion on the approval of the minutes of April 6? If none, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll for this.
Michael Miranda.
Yes.
Danielle Droes.
Yes.
Dr. Bruce Fletcher.
Yes.
Beth Nike Hutt-Vagner.
Yes.
Richard Laverrier. Amy Parati.
Yes.
Sam Sharma.
Yes.
Jessica Weaver.
Yes.
Anastasia Yopp.
Yes.
Okay, very good. We are now going to move on to Agenda Item E, which is the Superintendent of Schools report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Fletcher. It is my pleasure to introduce Dan Dias, principal of John Wallace Middle School. He's participating virtually, and I will let him introduce his team. But I wanted to alert the board that not only are we going to hear about a reading program that his team developed at John Wallace, but this is actually a program that was paid for using ESSER dollars. So this will give the board a good overview of the ESSER dollars in action. So Mr. Dias, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Brummett. Hope everyone can hear me okay. It's a pleasure to be here tonight with you all and really get a chance to just highlight some of the work we've been doing at John Wallace, particularly in the area of reading. And exactly as Dr. Brummett said, that this was some of the ESSER funding. And it really was related to some of the learning gaps that we knew would, had occurred due to the pandemic. You know, from March of 2020, even last year in a hybrid model. So we had gotten together with our reading team who are here with me tonight. Allison Pulcini will be speaking. She's our literacy consultant and instructional coach at John Wallace. And also Lauren Close, who is here with us. She is a reading interventionist at John Wallace as well. I'd like to also acknowledge our other reading team members, Lauren Deruboe, who's another reading interventionist, and Paul Spinella, who, when we talk about our paraeducators and our learning tutors, Paul's a learning tutor in our reading programs. He's been a long time. He does an exceptional job for our students. He runs small groups, works with their team, so acknowledge him tonight as well. So what I'd like to share is just kind of the theory behind the course that we put together, a little bit on how this ties into our continuous improvement plan, and then some of the, you know, successes that we've seen. And Lauren and Allison would like to share a little bit about the course itself and how it's going and what kids are going through here. And really, again, it's focusing on reading, but unique in the, in the fact that this course is really tailored to all students in reading and really adding an extra layer of reading support for our kids as they're coming through in grade five. So just want to start off first, kind of sharing a little bit on our focus on reading. This is just a snapshot of our continuous improvement plan at John Wallace Middle School. And in the area of teaching and learning, we won't go through the whole plan, but you can see clearly that one of our objectives is around tier-one instruction that's rigorous, relevant, and engaging for kids. And you're gonna hear that engaging piece come up from Allison and Lauren. Really, a lot of the course has been modeled from getting feedback from the kids this year on what's working for them, what's been engaging with them, and you'll hear them talk about that. So, you know, we've been working a lot on reading workshop, writing workshop, particularly in our grade-five group as well. And also some of the other goals that you see on here is this idea of acceleration. We knew that, you know, coming out of the pandemic, that our students were going to have some gaps, particularly around reading. And there's some different schools of thought around that. You know, do you remediate and use the remediation piece and try to fill gaps? Well, a lot of the research coming out, particularly around the pandemic, is this idea of acceleration, that yes, you want to try to remediate gaps, but if that's all we are doing, you know, for those students, that's not very engaging. And as the courses continue to go and, you know, standards continue to go through, we can't just be remediating. So this was really an attempt at us using some acceleration, which really involves us putting in some tier-one strategies like vocabulary building, understanding theories, concepts, some higher-level thinking as well, so that we can accelerate the students as well rather than just remediate. So that's a little bit of the theory behind some of the learning that you'll hear Lauren and Allison talking about. Some of our other goals around equity, promoting equitable instructional practices, are ensuring our most highly qualified educators are working with students who may have needs. So Allison, Lauren, now Allison and Lauren now have an opportunity in this course to work with every grade-five student. And they'll talk about how that works and what that looks like. But it also gives us an opportunity in this course to maybe identify some students that through our SRBI process maybe weren't identified or weren't flagged. But now that they're getting this opportunity to work with them in a 27-day cycle, they're able to see what needs some students may have. And we've actually ended up bringing a couple of students onto our SRBI program through this course this school year. And some of the other tier-one learning strategies, such as for addressing unfinished learning, explicit vocabulary instruction, working on prior knowledge, prerequisite skills, that's also a part of this reading course. So a little background on the reading course. As I said, we had gotten together in the spring of 2021 and really wanted to plan and pilot this in grade five as an opportunity for every student to cycle through a particular reading course. Now, that being said, our language arts course in grade five, certainly there's a heavy emphasis on reading, on writing there as well. And we also have an SRBI program where we have intervention in tier-two and tier-three for students. But this again was another layer of support, particularly trying to address some of the unfinished learning that occurred during the pandemic. So we had a planned proposal that we did in the fall that was accepted. The course was designed and it's being taught by Allison and Lauren. Allison and Lauren designed the course. They put the curriculum together. And as Dr. Brummett shared, it was through ESSER funds. And the other good news is that, you know, Allison and Lauren are already in our school, so it didn't require additional staffing. They were able to put this course together and they are both teaching it, which was excellent. So the course, how it works, is students cycle through a 27-day reading course as part of their on-course cycle. During their library, library media time, they're able to use the second half of that in this reading course that's taught by Allison and by Lauren. And that also frees up our media specialist to do some other instruction with some other grades during that time. Students cycle into this course 26, about 27 days. Allison and Lauren are gonna share some highlights around the course and what are students learning in the actual course itself. We did start the course during Cycle III this year. The way the on-course cycles work at the middle level is students have seven cycles. We did need the first two cycles to design and build the course. So we started in Cycle III this year. We're currently in Cycle VI with our students, and we'll have one more group go through in Cycle VII. So as far as the highlights information, Lauren and Allison will share some of the learning that's happening in that course. But I wanted to share some initial data just with the board and the team here tonight, just to kind of see what we were looking at as our spring maze data. The maze is the assessment that we use. It's actually tied to our building goals and our district goals. And really, this revolves around fluency in reading. And if you look at the data here, you know, I'm presenting, you can see that even pre-pandemic, back in 2018, 2019, the data that you're looking at was spring. By the end of the school year, after a full school year, our fifth-grade students, we ended up, you know, around 71% of our students ending with low risk or no risk in reading, which is the target that we want. And that's kind of where we were hovering in grade five for a while, anywhere between 70 and 75%. In 19 and 20, that was the first year, you know, of the pandemic. And in March, our students were remote. We did not have the assessment given due to the nature of remote learning at that time. And in 2020, 21, that's when we went to our hybrid model, where students were in the hybrid, you know, half remote, half in-person instruction for majority of the school year. We know that, you know, that can never replace in-person instruction. And we know that at the end of the spring of that year, our students in grade five were about 56% no risk due to some learning gaps from the pandemic. And I'm very happy to report that as of March, not even, you know, our last assessment as these were, as of March of this year, and giving our maze assessment, we're now at 84% of our fifth graders are at low risk in reading, which is a huge success, and that's all students. And then, you know, from an equity perspective as well, we've seen with some of our subgroups as well, some of our other data, that gaps are really starting to close. We can attribute that certainly to the reading course that's cycling. We can attribute that certainly to the reading course that's cycling through, some of the other work that we're doing in our reading department, particularly our grade-five teachers in language arts, and also our reading intervention program. So we're hoping that our final assessment will be in May. We're hoping to see even higher numbers, with the goal being that students have this solid foundation as they're coming through in grade five, which, you know, what will continue. And as they move through, one of the you know, challenges if a student is struggling in reading is accessing content. We need to have solid reading skills, fluency skills, comprehension skills to access content as you make your way through middle school. So we're very happy so far with how the course has gone and the results that we saw in March. And Allison and Lauren are going to share some highlights of the course. You can get a better understanding of what's actually happening in that course. So Allison and Lauren, I'll kind of be the gatekeeper on the slideshow presentation, so just let me know when to move the slides for you. So we'll go to our next slide, so you can learn a little bit more about what's happening in this reading course.
Everybody, I'm Allison Pulcini. As Dan said, I'm the literacy coach at Wallace. So what you're looking at right now is a goal-setting worksheet. We start every cycle with our students talking about setting goals. We have tweaked this goal-setting worksheet pretty much at the end of every cycle, based on our own observations of the students' use of it and based on student feedback that we've gotten. So we start by talking with our students about what reading is, what makes a good reader, and what makes a good student in general. And we ask them to start to think about themselves as a learner, not just a reader, but a learner. We ask them to really think about, what are some traits that I already have that make me a good reader or a good learner? Because our, our students do run the gamut of, you know, students in this class are, some of them are exceptional readers, and some of them are definitely struggling readers. So we ask them to think about what they're already good at, and then we ask them to think about traits that they have that maybe they want to improve upon, or traits that they don't quite have yet that they would like to start to work towards. And then what we do is we ask them to write a goal. We talk a lot about goals with our kids. We talk about them being attainable and reachable. And we talk to them about being realistic. We share our own goals with them. We talk about our personal goals. We talk about our professional goals. And we ask them to think about themselves. We ask them, they work in groups together. They talk to their neighbors about their traits and, and what their goals could be. And then we actually have them write their goal. We have had kids who have written goals that are directly connected to reading. We have had students who have wanted to improve their fluency. We have had students who recognize the fact that sometimes comprehension is difficult for them, and they don't know what to do when they don't understand what they're reading. We have had students who have been super honest with us and have said, I hate to read. Like, I've never found that Just Write book yet. So some of them write a goal around that. Some of them write a goal about, I'm already a good reader, but I want to read more difficult material, or I want to be, want to become a deeper thinker about what I'm reading. Also had students write goals around their anxiety about being in class and, and how to ask a question when you're nervous about that. We've had students talk about needing to learn how to focus themselves, not only necessarily during their reading, but in class in general. It is a very rare occasion that a student writes a goal or suggests a goal that is something that Lauren and I can't help them with. We did have a student two cycles ago, two cycles ago, who wanted to become a better skier. Lauren and I kind of looked at each other and shrugged our shoulders, and we were like, we have nothing for you on that one, so we had to help that student rework their goal. Once the students have written their goals, we actually meet with them individually. And in that individual meeting, we actually write the action steps that they're gonna take to reaching their goal. We ask them halfway through the cycle, which happens to be tomorrow for the group we have now, to actually reflect on their goal. You can see right there, we have a little sample of a student's reflection in their notebook. But we talked to them about, where are you with your goal? What do you need to do differently? We will also, over the next couple of days, since we are halfway through, we'll meet with them individually to touch base on their goals. Some of our students have reached their goal already. Some of them came back from vacation and were like, hey, I think I reached my goal. And so they'll be ready to write a new one for the second half of the cycle. Some students will need us to tweak their action steps. Some students will be like, I'm in a good place. I, I think I'll get there by the end of the cycle. So students who have written their goal with me and their action plan with me will actually meet with Lauren tomorrow, so they get to talk with the, our, our partner. And then the students who wrote their action plan and goal with Lauren will meet with me tomorrow or over the next few days and to do that work. And then at the end of the cycle, we ask them to yet again reflect in their notebooks about their goal and how they feel about them. And then we will meet with them again individually. They'll go back to the original teacher that they met with when they wrote their goal and action plan. And we'll talk about, have you reached that goal? How does it feel to have reached that goal? And oftentimes, the kids will say to us, this was great. Like, I feel like I've accomplished something in this twenty-seven days. And we talk to them about, how do you write your own goals? Like, now that you're moving on to a new cycle, what, what can you be doing and what goal can you write for yourself that you can maybe manage?
Hey, everybody. I'm Lauren Close, the reading interventionist at John Wallace. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to present this class. Allison and I are really proud of it and really proud of where it's evolved to, so we're excited to be talking to you about it. One of the things that we were really, what was really important to us was that the class had an anchor text that we were going to use to work on the skills and strategies that we were going to be teaching the students, those who needed acceleration and those who needed some extra assistance. So we chose Slacker by Gordon Corman. It has been a hit. A lot of kids have read Gordon Corman before, so we're excited to see that. And some kids hadn't and said, geez, if he writes things like this, I'd like to read some more. During the course of reading, we do have them, we do set a calendar for them. Some of our students and they're connecting to their goals have trouble with time management. So one of the things that Allison, thank you, Dan, one of the things that Allison and I have done is that we have put together a calendar that you'll see presented here that breaks up the reading into chunks and lets the kids see you have this many days to read this particular number of chapters and so on and so forth. And this really helps our struggling students who don't know how to take a long assignment and chunk it into pieces. Truth be told, we did, the first cycle, we did try and have the students do this on their own. And this was one of the reflecting pieces that Allison and I realized that they weren't quite ready for that. So we give them the calendar ahead of time, and we allow them to see if you have a sporting event, if you have a musical event, and you know some reading is done, make sure you see how many days you have to get it done. Another thing that we offer for our students is the audio version of Slacker. We have students with a variety of learning styles, and we have had some students who do need to listen. Allison and I just tell them they have to read along as they listen. They can't just sit and listen to the book. And the feedback we've gotten at the end of most every cycle has been, I really like having that option to, to be able to listen. And finally, we go, and you'll see this on the next slide, but we go through a variety of skills and strategies during the course. Thank you. Just go back one more. And what we ask students to do during it is to jot. So for every chunk of chapters, they are jotting in a notebook that we provide to them. Sometimes the jots are associated with the skill or strategy that we're teaching. For instance, this one was all about inferring about characters. So you can see that this particular student chose to do a character web. Other times, the jots are free-form. They're allowed to do whatever they want. If they want to draw a picture, if they want to ask questions. We've had students who have written poems about the chapter. As long as they are jotting and reflecting on the chapter, we are fine with whatever they want to do, whatever they, whatever medium they choose. So in relation to those skills and strategies, we do a variety of things in this class. If you want to click one over for me, thank you. One of the things we start off with is visualizing. Visualizing is a very important skill for reading comprehension, having that picture in your head when you're reading. So we do about two to three days where we will have them read something, or we read something to them, and they sketch for us what they're seeing. And what we talk about during this skill is even though all of our pictures look different, they all have similarities, which is showing that you're understanding what's going on in the text. Another thing that we do, and you can see this picture of our two cycles ago, is we do our inferencing lesson. Our inferencing lesson is probably the one at the end of the cycle that the kids say, keep this, it's our favorite one. What you see here is three of our students are looking in a bag at various items that we bring in. They stick their hand in there, and they have to infer what's in the bag just based on clues. They can't look at it and base, based on clues. This extends into another inferencing activity where we watch a digital text. We have digital texts sprinkled throughout the unit or throughout the course, I should say, where they then have to infer what a character is thinking, feeling, based on their actions, their interactions with other characters, as well as the music behind the digital text. So we're really trying to bring in a lot of different mediums. And then our perspective lesson is always a good time because we have Mr. Diaz, our secret guest come in, and we separate the kids into two different perspectives. We have done everything from, I'm sure the board will appreciate this, virtual snow days versus regular snow days. This past cycle, we had them do the perspective of if one, if John Wallace should be grades five and six, and Kellogg should be seven and eight, don't worry, we made it very clear to the students this was not a possibility. We didn't want anybody going home and saying, I'm going to Kellogg tomorrow. And then what happens is Mr. Diaz comes in and he has to guess what it is, what the topic is, that they have taken two different perspectives on. And you'll see here, we extend that activity. We let the kids write on the desks. Sorry. Don't worry, it comes right off. And this particular activity is they're taking on a perspective of the character and telling the highs and lows of this particular character in the book. So you can see that we're tying the skills and strategies not only to the book, but to just the world around them.
So I have to comment, when we do ask the kids or tell the kids that they can write on the desk, they often look at us like we're really trying to get them into trouble until Lauren or I take a marker and actually write on a desk first. And then they're like, oh, okay, so now we can do that. One of the next things we work on with the students is the, it's called a question formulation technique. We talk to the kids about, you know, how many questions in a day do you think you ask? Typically, a normal fifth grader asks something around a hundred and forty-three questions a day. And then we talk about questions in general. We talk about opened questions where you need more than a one-word answer or a yes or no answer. And then we talk about closed questions where all you get is a one-word response. You know, that kind of question when they come home from school and their parents ask them, how was your day? And, you know, the response is fine versus, tell me one thing that happened today. And so we, we talk to the kids about asking questions in general and about how asking questions, especially while you're reading, is so important because it is a comprehension check for you. And it is a way to clarify your thinking when you're reading. And so we do a, a big activity around this question formulation technique. And then what the kids do in their notebooks is, for that next chunk of reading, is, is they ask questions. And we talk to them about asking closed questions and open questions, and then they jot about those in, based on what they've read. The last thing we do, the last, we use, as Lauren said, we do use a variety of digital shorts with our students. The last one is synthesizing, where we, we show them this short. It's called the present. Our students always have very mixed emotions when they see it for the first time. I won't spoil it, but the boy is not very nice to the dog initially. And they found out why as the short continues. But we take all of these ideas, the, the inferencing and the perspective and asking questions, and even the visualizing piece, and we ask them to synthesize all of those strategies and skills while they're used, while they're watching this digital text. It's a great culminating activity for us. It gives us a sense of where they are, you know, have they got it? Where are their strengths? Where are their weaknesses? The last thing we do, and we always do the debrief the second to last day of the cycle, because we always have a celebration on the last day of the cycle. But we debrief with the students. We literally list everything we've done on the board, and we go through each of the items with the students, and we ask them for their feedback. They're very interesting to watch at the very beginning because they don't want to necessarily hurt our feelings because they don't want to tell us something that they liked or that they thought could be better. But when we are, we're very upfront and honest, and we said, we're asking you this because we want your, we want your feelings, we want your thoughts, because that's how we make changes for the next group of students. So we always debrief that second to last day of the cycle. We have made significant changes in activities that we've done. We've heard from our kids that there are some activities that they wanted to do longer, that maybe we didn't give them enough time to do. And then there were certain strategies and skills that they were like, we really didn't need that. Like, we, we, we got it. And, and so again, we have made adjustments daily to our plans, and we certainly make them at the end of every cycle so that we think what we're doing with the next cycle is, is the best that we can be doing. But we will tweak it again at the end of that cycle as well.
And just in closing, as far as, you know, next steps for us would be, you know, at the end of the year, for us to really, you know, assess the course, look at the data again. We'll have an assessment that all fifth graders will take again with the maze, and also, you know, our smarter balance or common lit, and, and, you know, try to measure the impact that this particular course has had. We would love to, you know, continue with this course in grade five next year, and even with the opportunity, hopefully, to have something similar in grade six, so that all students will have a specific reading course. And these skills that you're seeing here are reading skills that transfer into social studies, into science, you know, into any course that they're gonna take throughout. So having that strong foundation in reading, and again, one of the the great parts about this course is whether you're coming in as a strong reader or a struggling reader, by goal-setting, individualizing the course, everyone's gonna get a benefit out of it and end up being a stronger reader and having a stronger skillset as, as they leave the course. So again, I just want to commend Lauren and Allison for, you know, coming up with the idea, for designing the course, for putting the plans proposal in, and thanking the board and, and Dr. Brummett, you know, and all involved on plans for moving forward with this pilot for this year. And we're definitely seeing some great benefits here. So just wanted to share that to you, with you today, and thanks for the opportunity.
All right. Thank you very much. And I'm gonna open it up for questions and comments from the board members. I'll go online first here with Anastasia Yop, and we'll come back to you, Ms. Hutbagnor.
Hi, hello. Thank you so much for that presentation. I think it's awesome. I just have a question for maybe Dr. Brummett, or, you know, whoever can answer this. Is this a program that's implemented just in John Wallace, or is this in all the schools?
I can answer that. We just, we started a pilot this year, so we're trying it out with a pilot just at John Wallace. And, you know, depending on how the course goes and when we see the outcomes of the course, we continue to see this data, I think then we would have that conversation, whether we want to replicate it, you know, in some other, and maybe at the middle level in another school. But for this particular year, we just wanted to pilot it first, kind of get some feedback, kind of design the course that way. So once we analyze the data and kind of see moving forward where we would go with it after that.
Thank you. The other thing I want to say is, I think this would be awesome, not only in the middle school, but in the elementary school. I saw you saying something about the fifth graders are struggling, and I know Newington Middle School starts in fifth grade. But this would be awesome to see, you know, if this could be done in the elementary school. So therefore, by the time they get to middle school, you know, they're already used to this system. I know growing up personally as a child, I come from kind of a strict family. This is something we did at home. I had to read books and write reports on them and, you know, you know, explain to my parents and my grandparents, you know, what was it about? What did you like about this? I think this would be awesome, not only in middle school, but definitely in the elementary schools. So when the children transition to the middle schools, they're already used to this, you know, I think it would improve their reading scores all around. I think this is an amazing program. That's what I wanted to say.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Hutbagnor.
I, I would, I would absolutely concur that I think that all students would benefit from this. Being a ELA teacher myself, I could have listened to this all day. This is really, really exciting. I feel that this program is rigorous. I feel that it is engaging and it is relevant learning. I think too, that some of the things, some of the activities that, that are being done here are helping those kids that might hate reading, right? I always feel as a ELA teacher, it just takes one book to change a student's mind. So I just, I think this is huge. I also, the other piece of it that I think that is one of the most important is that the students have input and ownership and reflection on their own learning, and that is some, often a piece that's missing when we educate kids. But when we, when we have that piece in there, I think it just yields stronger results. So I, I think this is fabulous. And I, I hope that all students can have some type of instruction in this nature. So, thank you.
I got this for you, and then you were on a roll, so I stopped. So I, I
Um, so I, I was that kid. I was that kid that just. With reading, it seemed more like just a task. It wasn't anything that I could be interested in. Um, and so from a reading comprehension standpoint. I knew what I was reading, but I wasn't interested in it enough to, to continue on. So. What I loved about this program was you're meeting the students where they're at. And they are, they have their own investment in their progress as readers. And I think that. Um, to what you just said, I, I think that that's the best part about the program is that they are involved in it. They're helping you guide the process. Um, and you're there along with them for this journey to try and figure out how to make it better for the next group of readers. So. Um, I, I wish it existed when I was a kid. Um, you know, sometimes whenever my kids bring stuff home, I'm like, God. I would have been so much better at school if we did it this way, but um. I just really appreciate the work, the idea, uh, the creativity and just, um. You know, stepping up and doing the pilot so that the other schools hopefully can benefit from it. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, uh, Ms. Parodi.
Thank you. Um, yeah, Allison and Lauren, I think this is an amazing thing that you have done. Um, I was taking notes as you were presenting and there's a lot of things that I. In my professional career have taken courses on and do the same thing. And you know, they, they have you set goals in the beginning of the class and they. They have you kind of reflect, self-reflect partway through. And at the end, um. The time management skills that you're teaching the kids, like you have to read these chapters in these days and what you mentioned, like activities. I'm finding my daughter now has so much going on after school and sports and, you know, she's struggling a little bit. So. Having, you know, even a month of, of this would, you know, just, I think, benefit all students. Um, but I just want to say that. All the skills, I think, as you said, transfer, are going to transfer everywhere else in their life, not just in school. As they grow up, as they get to high school, just continuously. So I'm, you know. I see a benefit of this. Everywhere. So thank you for presenting. It was excellent.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Weaver.
Yeah, I just want to say second on all of that. Um, but also just wanted to highlight too, thank you so much for sharing that data. Um, I think. You know, it's just one aspect that we use um, to, to analyze how the impact of that is. Um, but I think it's really telling. Um, that those numbers are even better than they were. Pre-pandemic, even like twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Um, to see those go up by ten percent was like seventy-one to eighty-four percent, no risk. Um, that's statistically significant to me. So I think, um. That's just something that we can continue to highlight because um, I'm really looking forward to that May data. And would love to, to follow up on that, um, because it just looks really promising and to have that kind of impact in that short amount of time. Um, not only helps us, and I just want to say thank you so much for using this uh, phrase, not only um, remediate but accelerate. Um, I think that's something that's going to be the name of the game in all of our areas, but that's something that I really appreciate you highlighting. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharma.
I just want to thank everyone for sharing, sharing this pro, such a wonderful program and I hope um. We can extend it, you know, uh, once we get all the data. But thanks, thanks a lot for sharing it and it's a such a wonderful initiative. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I want to also say that I'm a strong advocate for this because, you know, in thirty plus years of teaching. One of the greatest struggles I've had as a teacher is getting children to read. And if you can't get them to read, you've built a strong barrier there. So if you can get them excited about reading, teach them, you know, not just how to phonetically read. But how to cut it up in chunks, how to be able to read it, how to be able to process it. These are all very important things. You know, by the time they reach me now, where I'm at teaching in college, uh, you know, I need people that can read. I don't really want to read to them, you know, and I, I make it a point to tell them I'm not going to read to readers. They have to read. So I really want to see this program grow and, uh, you know, I'm going to stand behind it with you. But I want to thank you very much for all of the work that you are doing. Uh, I, I, I'm really impressed. I like the numbers too. They're going to get better. All right, uh, Ms. Yop.
Sorry, I had one final comment. My apologies. So, um, just so I can. Make sure I'm clear. Are we going to get the final numbers or additional numbers in May? Is that what they were saying?
So our, so yeah, so the maze assessment, it, it's just one measure is the maze assessment, uh, best, but that's we use it as, as a billing. Uh, base goal and for a score base goal, uh, and we give that assessment five times a year. So. You know, from, from fall to spring, um, actually, uh, you know, in the fall, we were, we were around the fiftieth percentile or so. So we've made huge gains. Um, over the school year, we'll give it again in May. Um, and I just want to, you know, certainly this course is a, is a big part of that, but also the work that's being done in the, in the fifth grade language arts class. And our intervention um, program as well. So it's kind of a concerted effort of the full reading program. Um, with a combination of this course, what our teachers are doing in language arts and our excellent reading intervention program as well. So we're seeing good gains here. And um, yeah, we, we did see higher numbers. In March than we had seen in the past. And that's, you know, shining a spotlight on it. Teachers uh, doing a great job and making reading a clear focus. We, we can see that, that growth. So. We're, we're proud of that uh, as well. And our kids are, are working hard and they're doing an awesome job uh, in persevering. So we're proud of them too.
And are, is this something that the teachers can implement in the classrooms or, you know, is this? Is this something that can be taught how to do, like the regular classroom teachers?
So yeah, so it's kind of reinforcing a lot of the skills, like they do inferencing in their curriculum do a lot. So this is really just honing in on that reading aspect of, of the. Of the course and kind of shining a spotlight on it for twenty-seven days. When a lot of these skills are going to be reinforced throughout the year in their language arts classes or for those students who are in intervention. Um, who might be struggling a bit, they're going to get reinforcement as well. So it's like an extra layer, an extra dose of reading that all students will cycle through this reading course. Uh, in grade five, at least for now as well.
Okay, I just want to say I'm a hundred and ten percent behind this. I see the whole board is as well. I am. Absolutely like so excited about this program. This is amazing and. I can't wait to see these numbers. I want to see this in elementary, middle school, high school. I, I think we need this. I think this is an amazing way to help the Newington students and hopefully other towns can, you know, benchmark off us, but this is great. I, I definitely want to see this go through. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Levery.
Uh, yes, thank you, Dr. Fletcher. So with the um, audiobooks, I do like. The idea behind it because it's presenting to um. Potentially to, to auditory learners who may not have the same level of comprehension. Um, I mean, one thing that is. Makes me wonder is what. When it comes to like test scores and whatnot, are we going to be able to somehow like. Wean them into from being audio and visual learners at the same time into moving into. Being compliant with something that's going to boost our test scores.
I have answers. I could get to that, but I'm not on that. I'll defer to Mr. Diaz or, or one of the teachers.
Yeah, could you repeat the question again? I'm sorry, but.
Yeah, I'm sure I was not clear with it. Um, so with the, you were, there was part of the presentation was talking about how there was um. Like audiobooks and whatnot, helping people who may, who may not have the same um. Reading comprehensions uh, ability or have, may not have yet developed that ability. So like with the audio, they may be auditory learners and may be uh, needing that to assist them. So one thing that I'm. Wondering about is when it comes to getting test scores, when it comes to being reading comprehension, they're not going to have audiobooks sitting there during their tests. Is how, how are we preparing them? Yes, we're engaging them. That is critically important, but how are we getting them to make sure that we meet those test scores?
I, I think I can maybe address part of that question. So when our students, the audiobook is available to the students. And I would venture a guess to say. Nobody has used only the audiobook. We have students who use the audiobook um, to catch up. If they're a little bit behind, if they're like a night where they know that they're not going to get their reading done, they may use the audiobook. So we haven't really had any students who have solely used the audiobook as their mode of reading slacker. We do also ask the students, um, and they're fifth graders, so they're pretty compliant. Um, to, to follow along in the book while they are reading. So they aren't just listening. The words are in front of them, so they are seeing some of those difficult words that maybe they wouldn't have been able to read independently. But they're seeing them and hearing them at the same time. Does that get it? Part of your question?
Yes.
I think the other thing that you're looking at is how do you take an auditory learner? And get them to the place where they're also a reader? Is that part of what you're looking for?
Absolutely, Dr. Fletcher.
All right. One of the things that I've done, and I'm sure they're going to do the same thing, is that I would actually have an auditory learner read the book at the same time they're listening to it. Because a lot of, uh, a lot of children are sight learners. They, they don't phonetically learn how to read words, but when they can see them and they hear them, then they can memorize them. So by combining the two of them together, that is one of the ways that we find success in getting a child to go from auditory to being able to read.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Ms. Kraus.
Well said, and I'll piggyback on that. It's, you can think of it like a scaffold to your point and. I'd point out that this is one part of the reading day, but students are reading at other parts of the day in their English class and across the curriculum. So this is just the purpose of this program in bringing in that engagement, providing that scaffold. Uh, but there are other parts of the day where they're reading on their level, reading different books. So kind of think of it as that stepping stone that's helping pull some things together for children. And then if I may, can I provide another clarification?
Please go ahead.
Um, just thinking about how this looks across the district. Uh, at the elementary level, we have two and a half hours for our in, English and reading instruction. So there's a dedicated time for reading instruction, a dedicated time for writing, dedicated time for word study. Um, when they get to the middle school, that all gets combined into language arts. So the time gets reduced immensely, right? Best nodding her head. Um, so what, what Allison and Lauren were so well saying, all of those strategies they're talking about, that's all part of our reading curriculum at the elementary level. So students are engaged in that kind of work, leading up to it at the appropriate level, um, throughout their elementary career. What we're finding is when they get to fifth grade, particularly due to the pandemic. There were some missing gaps in there and that's when this program was designed to fill some of those gaps. So this is not the first time that they're seeing these reading skills. This, they're not even only seeing them with Allison and Lauren. They're seeing them. As Allison said, in the classroom. It's, it's a supportive um, program to the regular curriculum. So this isn't the only time they're getting it. Um, we, we've seen this, these issues going into fifth grade and that's one of the things we've talked about. You know, Dan and I were talking about. Using it in an ongoing way. Um, but I just wanted to clarify that they do get this type of. Very targeted reading instruction at the elementary level because they're, they're learning to read at that point.
And to your point, Mrs. Kraus, and to, excuse me, and to your point, Mrs. Kraus, one of the things. That cycle three started with was we did a few days of predicting. And at, during the debrief of that, um, both in cycle three and cycle four, they said to us, we know how to do this. We. And some of them said, we learned this in elementary school. So that was one of the ways that Allison and I reflected and therefore took predicting out. And actually added, um, what we thought was maybe a higher level skill, which is, was the inferencing. Um, because that was the feedback we got, which was, we knew this in elementary school. Um, so that's where the kids being a part of the learning and a part of creating this. Curriculum and this course with us has really opened our eyes to what they know and what, how we can better uh, meet their needs.
And that's a, that's a great example. And if you think about those two skills, predicting and inferencing. And how much they change as the text gets more complex, that's what changes through the grade. So we start, inferencing starts in the early elementary years. But what changes is they're reading more complex texts. So the inferences are much deeper than what they look like in first and second grade. So it's not that they've never seen that or talked about that or tried that strategy. It's that. Now we're doing that with much more complex text, so it looks different. And then we, that's when it, there's a breakdown for some children. So this type of work is really important to bring it back in.
Very good. Very good. Wow, very informative.
Reading one-on-one.
Yes. Any other questions? All good. I want to thank you guys for your presentation tonight and we look forward to uh, future information and updates. Thank you once again. All right, we are going to move on to uh, agenda item F. Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Because we're on superintendent's report. I just wanted to um, just make a note of something that was in the report that. I didn't mention when we were talking about uh, the paraeducators, but it, it kind of, it supported what I was thinking and. And I, I thought, I knew that I read it somewhere, but so if I could just read really quick.
Please, please do.
So in, in Ms. Heslin's um, report for special ed. She said, paraeducators continue to be a topic of conversation at all elementary schools, which. I can tell you a hundred percent is true because that's nonstop what parents are talking about, um, and educators in the elementary schools. Um, she goes on to say, there have been many paraeducators resigning. We are having difficulty hiring qualified staff to fill openings. And to meet the needs of students. Staff are revising schedules and looking at creative ways to redistribute support. However, the need is significant. So I, that, the only reason I wanted to point that out was. Going back to, again, our budget's done. I know we're going to talk about later, but in the future. I think we, we have to really come together to, to discuss with the town. Further than what can we do just to get by and MOU for, to avoid layoffs, you know. For reading here, we're hearing nonstop about the need for paraeducators and to make, you know, a paraeducator offer more competitive. And, and keep them from resigning. And I feel like if, if we continue to just budget based on. What we had last year and our immediate need, rather than trying to fix these certain circumstances. Um, to support all of our educators and all of our students, then it, I, I think we're doing a disservice. And so that, that was the framework of my, we appreciate them, but I want to see us do a little bit more. And when I read that a couple of days ago, that's what sparked that. So I just want to point it out.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so. We are going to move on to our action items. We have one action item tonight, which is number one. Number two is only going to be discussion when we get to it. And we will bring this back for action at our next meeting. Okay, so moving on to item F, number one. Uh, it is an action item, resolutions honoring the twenty twenty-two valedictorian and salutatorian. So, does somebody have that page opened? You got it? All right.
Move the Board of Education proclaim Bryce Turner as valedictorian for the Newington High School graduating class of twenty twenty-two. And Alexandra Daha as salutatorian for the Newington High School graduating class of twenty twenty-two.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded by Mr. Branda. Do we have any discussion? Ms. Weaver.
Just want to say congratulations.
Yes.
Our valedictorian.
Absolutely.
Oh, and also are we, um, well, I know the resolutions, do we have them come in person, I believe, or are we doing that this year?
It's usually presented at the scholars' breakfast.
Okay, just want to make sure they're happening. I know every year is different.
Yeah, I was privileged to be there last year. Anyone else? Comments or questions? All right, so we have a motion for this resolution and a second. So I'm going to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Michael Branda.
Yes.
Danielle Rose.
Yes.
Dr. Bruce Fletcher.
Yes.
Beth Manki Hutbagnor.
Yeah.
Richard LaVerear.
Yes.
Amy Paradi.
Yes.
Sam Sharma.
Yes.
Jessica Weaver.
Yes.
Anastasia Yop.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, very good. Moving on to item F two, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Brummett to give us an update.
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. And because it is related to budget, I would like to respond to. Mr. Branda's comments that I will be scheduling. Um, now that the budget is just about settled, um, an executive session with the board to discuss the paramatter. Mr. Farisi and Ms. Davis have been working diligently to come up with thoughts and ideas and Jack Moles as well. About how to address their ongoing concerns. Um, so that has not been dropped and it will be coming uh, and scheduled very soon. I also wanted to start off my presentation with what I'm going to call budget mythbusters. Um, I wanted to kind of address some of the issues that I hear either at public meetings or just, you know. Passed along to me. I know there's been a lot of chatter about. The use of the Chromebook insurance money as a budget offset. And I, I'm just trying to clarify that that is something that we've discussed and it only became something we could action on this year. Because of the amount in that account. Um, you cannot dip into that to offset Chromebook costs. If you really need to rely on a good chunk of it for repairs and all of that. So. I just want to clarify that. I know there's been some commentary about it, but it is something. I know there's been some commentary about it, but it is something I did in Plainville and something that made sense to do this year here in Newington because the account had become the appropriate balance level to now be able to use some of it, not all of it, to offset our, uh, technology expenses. Uh, last evening, there was a comment that the library science teacher wasn't retiring until December. That is not the case. Uh, that individual's retiring at the end of this school year. Um, I know there's also been discussion about pots of money that we can dip into and, and maybe provide us some more budget resources. And I'm, I know in previous, uh, board members that we've discussed the Student Activity Fund pretty much at length. And just to clarify for any new board members, that this is money that is collected at each school, predominantly the high school, and it offsets, and it's all student, um, payments. And it does offset club expenses, sporting expenses, sports equipment. We don't oversee that money. It is not board money. It is money contributed by students and their parents, and it's allocated at the discretion of various clubs to pay for different things. So we don't have any access to that money. It is money that sits in accounts. And in fact, the people that oversee it are appointed. It's a stipend position, and they have to oversee it at the school level. There was also, um, I sent out that, I want to clarify the purpose of the email I sent out last week about, um, reminding the board about open choice dollars. I did mention it to Governor Lamont today, as I promised that I would. He, uh, concurred that Newington's a very good partner with open choice. No, uh, without, need to give thanks to Mr. Freesi, that's one of his, one of his many functions. And I said, "Governor, please keep it in your budget. We really need it here in Newington. It's going to help us." And he said, "Maureen, it's in the budget. I don't want to touch it. Newington's a great partner." So, but why I sent that email out is I wanted to make sure there was no confusion. That was something I had mentioned in my budget presentations all the way through, pending open choice legislation. And I wanted to remind the board of that. And also, I talked to Dr. Fletcher to also provide a possible, possible solution to that library resource teacher, since I was getting, uh, feedback from the board at our last meeting that maybe removing that position was not, um, you know, people were feeling like maybe that wasn't a good decision. Uh, I will get, last night a town council member acknowledged that she did not think that we wanted to do that, that we just did it, um, to lower our ask and to show good faith that we wanted to come in with as low a budget as we could. So that's why that email went out. It didn't constitute an illegal meeting. It was simply to inform the board that this is a possibility. I don't believe we have any way to do it in the budget that's currently, um, sitting before us. It would have to be through those extra dollars. So that was really my intention, uh, in sending that out. And I, I know there was potentially some miscommunication about it, but that really was the intent. Um, and it's something I had also shared with the library media specialists, who, um, Mr. Freesi and I met with earlier this week to tell them where all that stood. I also spoke with, uh, Dr. Fletcher about wanting to make sure all board members, especially our new board members, know where all this ESTER money went to and that, you know, that it is being very thoroughly spent. Um, I want to show you name by name who is being paid for right now out of ESTER money. The board has seen this before, but if you're a new board member, perhaps you haven't. So literally, these are people that their salary comes out of ESTER dollars, and that also has money set aside in there for the benefits. So when these positions brought on board, that is, that is what we envision. So Lenny Ruttigliano is now a coach. He was an English teacher, but we backfilled him, so he could be a coach. Uh, similarly, Christine Gamari is a new STEM coach. She came from another district. Eileen Frankolino's been with us for a while, but we upgraded her position because she has helped us with some of our credit recovery initiatives. Uh, Lauren DeRubo's the reading teacher who works within that John Wallace program. Carrie Sykes is a math interventionist. Now, some of these people are, were already in the district, and we upgraded them to full-time, or they stayed at one building full-time, then we spread the position out elsewhere. So there was many different allocations. Roselle O'Hara has been with us for a while. This year, she's an EL teacher with ESTER funds. Rebecca Tubbs is, I believe, a brand-new EL teacher to the district. Michael Tyler was a, already on staff, but we moved his position over to, um, ESTER funds, and were able to hire a replacement, I believe Eddie Green. Uh, two new BCBAs, because many of our kids have come back with significant behavior issues. So those are new positions. Caitlin Holmes is Zip, she goes by Zippy, her. Um, and then Bonnie Lesbeer is a new case manager at Patterson-Wallace. Now, this individual was not the first person hired in that position. The original person hired did leave, and there was maybe a two-month gap there, and she was replaced, uh, you know, I think by Christmas time, by this individual. And Dr. Hairston, our Equity Inclusion Specialist, is paid for partly by ESTER funds, partly by open choice dollars. And then the ESS program, which is called Effective School Solutions, prior to the COVID relief monies, we had programming at the high school and at Kellogg. This year, we added it at Wallace using ESTER dollars. So all of those pieces add up to well over between $800,000 and $900,000. And we have, this is a three-year grant, and it's a little over $3 million. Where's the rest of it going? Well, here it is. We also allowed our, um, teachers to apply for mini-grants to start some new initiatives at their schools to see if it would take hold and positively impact either our acceleration of learning or equity efforts. And they really did come up with some fantastic ideas. Mr. Trillo, Assistant Principal at Wallace, uh, endorsed what's called the Language Line. This has allowed us to revolutionize how often we can translate for families. He learned about it when he was employed in Hartford schools. So maybe folks around the table have heard of it before. We had kind of limited our translation services to another company, but now on the spot, we can get translation. I had superintendent award ceremony on Monday. One of the award winners was an ML student. We translated part of that ceremony so that parent could understand what was going on. It was just fantastic. Mr. Helming was able to expand his Everyone's a Writer program at, uh, Reynolds, which is a huge success. Jen Freeze, one of our high school teachers, former Teacher of the Year, has taken some initiative with LGBTQ training, and that has spread out more than just at the high school. There's been trainings done at our, uh, middle schools as well. Um, we've adopted or expanded, uh, Reflex Math, which is another, um, acceleration program for math, and Dreambox, which is another math ma, program, all to support our kids who've lost some ground on their math skills. Kristin Devlin at, uh, she's at Kellogg, I believe. She's a coach, uh, and she developed the Roots to Rise program as a complement to our SEL efforts. Jesse Dalton, a teacher at Patterson, developed a Family Diversity Book Club. And Mr. Kemp, uh, proposed that we expand our Spotlight and Music program, which he feels is really helping kids learn, um, music at a higher level. So those are the, uh, various ways we have spent that money. We've, we keep looking at it, refining it, projecting it out to make sure that it will be, uh, fully spent. There's two more years on that grant. A separate earlier grant, um, that Wendy oversees has helped us with providing the security guards at the elementary schools, as well as some other interventionists. So, but this was the bigger grant. It's, like I said, over three years, it's about $3.1 million. So it's, it's a good chunk of change. So that, that's how we are spending our ESTER monies. And then the last thing I wanted to talk about, and I'm going to have Lou assist me with this, is where does the budget stand right now? I know some of our new board members are probably wondering, well, how do we, um, reconcile the budget now? The, the town, uh, approved unanimously last evening the MOU. Um, I did listen into the meeting and heard a pretty unanimous support for it. Uh, again, I want to, uh, give accolades to Dr. Fletcher and Mayor Del Duino, who worked collaboratively, and I will tell you, many counselors last night commented on that. And during the voting process, I did hear quite a bit of an exuberance about this collaboration. So I'm thrilled about it, frankly. Um, and again, total accolades to the work that Dr. Fletcher did to make it happen. Um, I think it's, it's hopefully a sign of some positive collaborations to come. But where we are tonight now is, and then I'm going to switch our little page here, is where does that leave us? So I'm going to start this, and then Lou's going to fill in the blanks. So our current budget this year, as everyone knows, was flat-funded at $76,768. Um, we were given a final appropriation last night when the MOU was factored in of a 2.46% increase. So we had originally requested a 3.63% increase. So that does leave us with an $894,732 shortfall, or 1.17%. So there's a couple of ways to go about this. The recommendation that Lou and I have, after analyzing our budget, I know there, there was comment last night that we could cut further in the board's budget. I feel the board did their due diligence and, um, cut to the bone. I mean, we're below, many, many of our items are below where they were this year. I don't know that there's anywhere to go in our budget. Our recommendation, though it is not necessarily, um, you know, certainly not a sustaining, sustainable recommendation, is to use the non-lapsing monies. We were able to use less of them this year than we thought because we just were really tight with our budget and very, uh, cost-conscious. Sadly, the issue with para-professionals and the high level of turnover and positions unfilled creates a surplus in that line item. So there's a variety of reasons why we didn't have to dip into the non-lapsing at the $2 million level, as we suspected. But we do have to dip into it to, and my recommendation would be to co, close the budget gap that we have for next year. We already knew we had to spend some of it this year. We also have to, and I'm going to scroll down a little bit here. So between the, we've already built into next year's budget, the $1.1 million. That was something the board knew about during the course of our budget deliberations. We're recommending, Lou and I, and this is something the board will vote on, I believe, at the next meeting, that we add $894,732 additionally from the non-lapsing fund. So between for next year's budget, we're relying on $2 million of non-lapsing monies. Um, what's left to spend this year to keep us whole in this year's budget is $1.1 million. Lou and I, having scoured through the budget, um, looked at everything, we feel that that money will sufficiently cover the money we have to give back to the town to uphold our end of the MOU and the money that we have to backfill in this year's budget because we got a 0% increase. I will say this too, and as Lou and I were processing this, uh, this week, uh, in preparation for tonight's meeting. The other thing to keep in mind is we signed that MOU with the stated purpose of, and the town's stated understanding is no layoffs. So we can't now go back into this budget and cut people. That would be contra-indicated to what we agreed to. So that's another reason why. I, I don't know where else we can go because we left the budget when it was transmitted to the town as, this is as lean as we can get without cutting people. So, and pardon me. I just wanted to point out, before I turn the mic, uh, back over to Bruce, or if Lou wants to add anything. So we are going to really end up with $0 in the non-lapsing fund at the end of next year. There will be no surplus this year. When you have a 0% budget, there's no surplus. It really is relying on surpluses from previous years that I'd be put into the non-lapsing as, uh, I thought a very good, you know, smart fiscal move. Um, so that, that really is, if that's another myth that we need to bust, there's going to be zero money in the non-lapsing fund at the end of next fiscal year. We anticipate that because of the deficit spending-type budgets that we've had to do these past two years, you know, and again, it's, this is very preliminary, but just so, and the board, I'm pretty sure knows this. You know, we're going to be, probably come out of the gate next year with a 5% increase just to keep everything status quo, not a single addition, keeping up with our contractual obligations, and then backfilling the money that we've used through non-lapsing. Um, if inflation continues to skyrocket, you know, Lou estimates around a 7% increase. Again, these are preliminary numbers. I don't want them to go on any type of social media platform, but these are just estimates, because I think it should, important to put on the record that the budgeting, we've come to a resolution. We're going to be whole for next year. Um, but it does set the table for difficult years ahead. So, um, anyway, I think, I don't, by bringing up that, I certainly don't want to take away from the fact that this board, many, with many new members, came together and got this budget work done and was willing to come to the table with, uh, a compromise. So I will, um, Lou, do you want to add anything to that?
You said perfectly.
See, I pay attention when you and I meet.
Yes. Everything's fine, unless anybody has any questions. Um, I will not speak for everyone in this room, but for me, um, people come before programs, and I, I would never support anything right, that, in this year that would have anything to do with, with layoffs. Okay? Be crystal clear on that. And number two, I'm glad you're spending, uh, ESTER dollars on Ms. Frankolino. She's been here for many, many years, and she is worth every penny. Thank you.
Couldn't agree more.
If you want to speak, then you can go next.
I don't know why you try. Uh, I was just, I just really wanted to just publicly say a huge thank you to, um, Dr. Fletcher and to, um, Mayor Beth. I think the, the collaboration that happened, and it, it felt like a bipartisan effort. And I feel like that is really a step in the right direction for both bodies. And I know that we've said many times that we really need before next, um, budget season for both bodies to come together and put everything out on the table. So I think this was such an essential step in the right direction, moving towards that. So I just want to thank, um, them for that really phenomenal leadership.
Thank you. Go ahead. We'll go down, yeah. We'll go down to you next, Ms. Weaver.
All right, so I guess I have, look, it's just a moment away. I, I COVID tested every single day this week. I don't have it. So, um, I, I guess I have two questions. The first one is, if we get that money from the state, if my estimation is correct, it's about $300,000. Based on the number of students and the increase of the $2,000 per student. So obviously, that will go into next year's operating budget, so it could potentially reduce the, this 5.57%. My understanding, a minimal.
Yes. Well, no, I think what, if we, once, if this open choice legislation passes, you are correct. We will get an extra $2,000 per child. If our, all of our seats are filled next year, that's 140 times 2,000. Anyone with quick math?
Well, I already did the math before, so I would look smart.
Thank you. So she is exactly right. So if we, if we use that money to pay for the library science teacher, you're right, there would be residual. My opinion on that would be, would certainly then require us to rely less on non-lapsing, and that could have a positive impact on the budget. You're exactly right. Uh, how that exactly plays out remains to be seen, but it, obviously, an extra $300,000 is never a bad thing.
And then my other question is, I, I understand there's no surplus. I don't think you're, you should endorse. But I've also heard, like, we have buy-ahead funds, like we could buy ahead, like Desmos even though we had cut that. We could buy ahead. So if we have this money in the buy-ahead, if buy-ahead, in my very, like, logical thought processes, there is money in the budget. And should we not drain our non-lapsing fund and maybe not purchase that ahead stuff? Because then it would go into our non-lapsing, into our savings account.
It does. It does. So I know that, I forgot to put that on my Mythbusters, uh, list. No, it's fine. It's not actually a myth. We do try to, at this time of year, um, offset, that's another strategy we use. And as you probably recall, it was one of those, uh, when we did reconciliation, what brought us down, down, down was some of that buy-ahead. We're pretty much tapped out on buy-ahead. So no, Desmos has not made its way back into the budget. Um, as I believe a board member asked me, how would that come to pass? I guess it came up at the Curriculum Committee meeting, um, a week, whatever that last met. As I mentioned, um, we had an unfilled position for a while, that special ed teacher. And when that two months of not having that filled comes to about $25,000, $30,000, that is possibly another source, because I certainly will not leave a dime of ESTER money on the table. Um, so that's, that would be the way we'd probably do it if we could. But I would agree, we've stretched the nickel as far as we can this year with existing resources. Our goal now is just to not, to drain the, uh, non-lapsing fund as minimally as possible. That is absolutely our goal.
Okay, Ms. Weaver.
Thank you. Um, I just want to echo Ms. Maki-Hutbacher's sentiments too. Um, it is appreciated because I think oftentimes when we feel like these crisis moments, it's very helpful to have someone lead a solution. So I just want to say thank you for that. Um, I think I may be a little pessimistic, but the $0 freaks me out. I think I may be a little pessimistic, but the zero dollar freaks me out. Um, particularly, I've, I've been concerned about the non-lapsing fund and I think, you know, my sentiments were made last, last meeting where I said, it's just not responsible budgeting to go one year, one year, one year and just keep moving and it's just not a good practice, in my opinion, to budget because particularly, we're going to be sitting at this table next year. And when we see that, I'm just going to wonder what position does that put us in? We're in the position that we're in now and that's where we're at, right? But I'm just wondering what can be done so that we're not in that zero position next year. Um, and I know that's you know, an open-ended rhetorical, but I think just from my perspective, um, you know, with, with this, if we have nothing in the piggy bank in that non-lapsing, there's no other place to reach from. And we were already kind of saying that this year in, in our budgeting. So um, I, I guess just something we, we need to consider. I don't think it's something we can take action on, obviously, in this time, but um, as we go through this next, because we're all be, I hope we're all here next year, sitting at this um table. I think that's just something that's of, of big concern to me. And I guess the other thing too is, um, you know, one of the things, I think, these Ester funds, there's just a lot of wait, this, so I appreciate that myth busting because it feels like in um in our minds or in particular Dr. Brummett and, and Lou and, and Dr. Fletcher, these are just automatic. So I think sometimes the public is like, wait, you said this, you said that, wait, with this, um, because it's just what you do every day. So I appreciate you um kind of dispelling anything or providing transparency. And I think the question then is too also, um, I think everyone's just curious how those will be used throughout the three years too, because when those run out too, again, part of that responsible budgeting is, okay, well, what happens to that position, right? We've had, I think, Miss Yoppa and others have asked about, you know, what happens when that runs out? Where do those positions go? And we obviously have um, and to Mr. Brandon's point earlier, and I'll wrap up, but there's clearly more need than there has been. I'm doing my Justin Daniels. Don't make me laugh. Um, but I think this is my ADHD, but this is really where I'm, I'm coming from is that there are um, you know, zeros and then there are other zeros that, you know, will run out in three years. It's not just this budget we need to be considering. It's the future budgets within this board and the next boards. Um, so that's just where my area of concern is and I don't know what can be done about that, but I guess if anyone, Dr. Brummett, if you have any comments on that, I would really appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure, absolutely. I think we'll be thinking along those lines probably be, beginning of next year. That could be another use of that open choice. If we use part of it to pay for the library science teacher, that leaves us with a couple hundred thousand dollars. Do we eventually offload an Ester position into that? Because that's going to be a recurring amount of money. Um, we will look at attrition opportunities, you know, when someone retires, we would backfill that person or not backfill that person. Um, you know, everyone that was hired for those positions and the union was fully informed, they are three-year positions. If, if we don't, you know, the goal would be to backfill them through another grant or through attrition. So we are thinking about that. Um, obviously, we continue to look for other grant opportunities and obviously through my advocacy groups, uh caps, uh, we, we've all been talking about the funding cliff. That every district in the state pretty much is going to face. Uh, very few didn't get at least some Ester monies. So we're, we're chatting at the state. Fortunately, Newington is, there's S E C S money is uh a hot topic. Uh, many districts could lose money if the education cost sharing money. Uh, every district gets, not district, actually town gets a certain amount of money every year. It's based on this very complicated formula uh that takes into account a multitude of issues. Uh, current projections, if the governor's budget does not change, as seventy communities over the next two years are going to lose ECS dollars. My group's advocating that that um, you know, doesn't go that way for the districts. Newington's not one of them. All the models that are being projected, Newington continues to go up. So um, that's a fortunate thing, but as someone that's, you know, kind of busy, active at the state level, I, I want to, you know, advocate for my colleagues as well. But, but trust that Newington's looking pretty good, no matter how the formula sorts out. I also advocate for excess cost. I, I testified and sent a letter to the governor about that, that is getting more money reimbursed for your special ed costs. And if that goes through, we will stand to get some additional monies that way. So those are all the pieces that continue to move. And that obviously part of my job is to do that advocacy with my organizations and, you know, my legislative uh contacts. So hopefully that answers your question. Best I can.
And then we'll get Mr. Sharma after Mr. Brandon.
Thank you. I'll, I'll be quickish, I think. Um, Ms. Weaver hit the Ester question I had, so that was awesome. Uh, the ECS, I actually jotted that down. So the town gets that money. And is the town required to give us one hundred percent of those funds? They are not. Okay. But they do or they do not?
Well, ECS appears in Janet's town budget as an offset grant.
Gotcha. Okay. Um, one thing that you touched on during your presentation that I still don't think some people understand is when we got a zero percent, that wasn't just, we can just roll over to the next year and everything is the same. I don't think sometimes people understand that the contractual obligations still exist and that's what creates that gap in the funding. So, Dr. Fletcher, you're on a little bit of a winning streak here. I'm hoping that you can advocate for the two percent of the non-lapsing fund. I don't know long, like short term, how that would help, but there's a charter revision committee going on. There's some changes going on in town hall, I've heard. The state of Connecticut says two percent. So I don't know why the town of Newington says one percent. But I think if, if we came together with the town to say, let's you get the Board of Ed two percent of non-lapsing because look at what we're doing right now. It, it won't fix everything, but it might help a little bit in terms of planning out. So that's my challenge to you. I'm on your winning streak. I wish you luck. Um, and then Dr. Brummett, my only other question was, you listed the grants that the teachers applied for. Were there other grants that didn't come through? Is it similar to like the plans program where they submit everything and then there are some that didn't make it?
Yes.
And are there some that didn't make it because funds ran out or because it wasn't, it wasn't formulated enough, like it wasn't where it needed to be? Because I'm just curious if there were things were missing that, yes, Ester funds ran out, but maybe there are ideas that we need to implement in the future.
No, that's a very good point. I did, we did require that the teachers, and it was required because of the grant reports that I'm going to have to write very soon. Um, you know, that you follow the particular uh criteria about accelerating learning or technology or school safety and security purposes. So the grants had to fall into those parameters. A few didn't meet the parameter. Some of them had very weak uh evaluation systems. So if there is more money left that we could reallocate toward that, I could reopen the grants for next year um and have those folks strengthen their applications. Um, if I could just tag on one other comment, the, the real important part of this year's budget process too is the fact that we got appropriate levels of funding in the busing area and appropriate levels of funding in technology. That made possible the willingness to sort of roll the dice on the health benefit credit and kind of offer it up um so the town could use it toward the budget. In previous years where we had no funding, that was, you know, a constant stressor. So we were always like hoping in the fall, the health benefit credit comes through at a level that will allow us to pay for buses. Sometimes that got misrepresented in, in the press or social media as we've got this windfall. We're spending money like uh it goes out of style. But really that was because we never had the funding in the busing and uh capital. So those are very important factors that allowed this to fall into place. So another possibility for funding next year is that health benefit credit comes to us in September. It could be the four hundred and sixty thousand, it could be zero. It could be anywhere in between. I doubt it'll be higher than that, but who knows? Um, so that's another factor that the board will hear about in the fall, likely end of September, right Lou? Okay.
Question about what was just said. Go ahead.
So it's the, the, the money that you're talking about taking out of to I don't even know where it is. It's there. The MOU money. Oh, there it is. So after, so you said that you were going to take money out of the non-lapsing fund for the MOU. If we get four hundred and sixty thousand dollars back in September, that goes like, that's like just, we're not claiming for it now, we're just hoping for it?
Yes.
So that could actually give us another four hundred and sixty.
Exactly. Exactly. And the board will be fully informed about that as soon as we get the memo from Janet.
Okay. So before we go to Mr. Sharma, very quickly, I just want to address one of the things you brought up about the non-lapsing fund. It's on my list of things to do. Okay.
I need to listen to my things to talk about the charter people tomorrow.
All right.
Well, we're on a roll.
Think I better go buy a lottery ticket, ticket then.
Perhaps.
All right, Mr. Sharma, before I get in trouble.
I just had a quick question for either Maureen or for Lou. Um, so the last, last two school years, right, we gave back the town one point five million dollars. That true? And that's because of the credits we got from the insurance?
I will let Lou field the question because I know our money turned back to the town can also be a hot button issue.
Okay. The general surplus we turned back was one million five, one year, five hundred thousand the second year. I can't remember the sequence. We, because of the shutdown in twenty twenty, we had a big windfall of special ed excess cost money, which reverted to the town because of how year-end finances worked out. That was nine hundred thousand dollars for somewhere in that general area. And then there was a um a smaller amount, I want to say about a hundred, hundred, hundred fifty thousand dollars from some other item. I just can't remember what that is at the moment, but I remember there's a third element in one of the years. So in total, it worked out to be about a million five each year in that general area, but there were different components based on the different years.
So are you saying is it, it's about three million in two years? That what we gave back to the town?
That's correct.
And so we give that money back and then basically we were like, you know, a budget, we were like zero budgeted and then we, we ended up basically using the money in the non-lapsing fund to balance the budget, right?
No, that was the um any money that goes into non-lapsing comes from the board budget. It is, we allowed to uh move one percent of our budget appropriation into the fund, provided we have it. This year, it doesn't look like we're going to have it. So there's nothing to move in. So the three million one hundred twenty thousand we have now, in all likelihood, would be the absolute maximum that we could have rolling to next year. We anticipate that we'll have needs in the vicinity of a million dollars to pay between now and the end of the year to reconcile this year's budget. So we are locked in under the uh recommendation that we made to make sure we've got our enti- our entire budget shortfall covered for next year by what will be in the non-lapsing fund this June thirtieth. And we are going to steer that in at the two million twenty-three thousand dollars. Um, that's here. And all of the other issues get resolved during this fiscal year. Yeah.
So, so for, for the record, Lou, we, um, the Board, the Board of Ed gave back the town about three million in the last two years, right? And then?
Yes.
And then, and then because we were flat budgeted, we had to basically dip into the non-lapsing fund just to balance the budget, right?
Well, we will be. We have not done it. We've held off taking money from the fund because I did not want to commit to an act that we couldn't reverse prior to budget adoption. So we've just waited, waited. Now that the budget is coming to focus, we know exactly how to go about uh getting everything squared away.
And, and, and the three million that we gave back, was that because of savings, you know, with the health insurance premiums or what was that? The, the money?
That was a contributing factor, yes.
Okay, so, so just for the record, like we did give back about three million in two years. And then because you were flat budgeted, we had to dip into the non-lapsing fund just to balance a budget. And also like in terms of the state, the state allows you to put in like two percent, but then our town allows us to put one percent into the non-lapsing?
Correct. Right. And I remember what that third budget item was, or the surplus item, it was actually the non-lapsing fund for both years.
Right. That's where the non-lapsing money comes from.
That was the third piece.
It, it, it just worries me because next year, it, you know, so we won't have, you know, non, we will have zero in the non-lapsing fund, right? So it just worries me about what's going to happen next year when that money runs out and, you know, and even though we gave back the down three million and then, you know, we get zero budgeted, we end up, we end up using money from the non-lapsing fund, that's going to finish, right? So that's, you know, just, this, you know, just for the.
Best as we can tell right now, yes.
Yeah, so, so that's why I'm saying, so just for the record, that's, you know, so people know. Thank you, Lou.
Yeah, okay.
Related to this, correct?
Right.
Can I just add one more clarification? On uh Mrs. Draze's uh inquiry before about the uh uh money from the uh open choice grant. You need to look at that as really a second non-lapsing fund that does not get added to our appropriation. It's again, money that's available for one-time use during the year of the grant. But it doesn't build our base for the succeeding year. So if we had enough money that came our way through the open choice, we would be able to fund that library uh position during the twenty-two, twenty-three year. But that just adds to the requirement for the following year. So you only have one year fund. You don't have permanent funding from that.
The two hundred thousand dollars, the extra two thousand dollars.
Per student is coming every year. It's not a one-time.
It is supposed to be every year. If it passes, it's currently written.
Correct. But, you know, as far as how you, we would have to assess how much is available that year, but it's not built into your budget base with uh doing it that way.
Came to the operating budget? That was my question.
We would, we'll use it as an offset. So under personnel, for example, we would show that three hundred thou, if that, if that's what the money ended up going for. Certainly, it seems like seventy thousand of it, depending on the person's salary and benefits, would go toward this library teacher. Um, but my understanding of the legislation is provided our open choice enrollment stays fairly stable that each year we would get that grant money and we could determine within the budget process that it would be an offset to salaries. And we could use it to maybe move someone off of Ester down the road or if another physician were to become part of our need or ask for the subsequent years. It's indirectly an offset to the budget. That's one po, you know, one possible use of it, which sounds like it would probably be the probable use of it.
Okay, Ms. Parati.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Sharma brought up um the Mythbuster that I was also going to suggest about the giving money back because it was mentioned last night that we're overspending and not giving any money back. So thank you for clarifying that. Um, and I know that you presented this to the town, so they did see that.
From that presentation.
Yes. Um, and then uh just a question on the open choice. Um, with the Anna Reynolds renovation, is there a potential that we would have less students next year or the year after? Or are we anticipating keeping um our enrollment the same?
My, my understanding is the enrollment will be remaining the same. Um, certainly there's no other plans and, or did we offer some open choice seats at Anna Reynolds for next year? So we're even doing that?
Good. Awesome.
We've increased our number, so.
Okay.
One forty is where it will be, the fall seats are declared and accepted, which we generally have that plus.
That's awesome. Thank you. Um, and then just to clear up the wording, the grant wording. So thank you for explaining again, uh, because I know that I've seen it before, exactly where the Ester funds grant money is being used this year. Um, the open choice, is that considered a grant or is it considered like a reimbursement? So I think the wording um sometimes for the public might get confusing because I know grants are specific for specific items, which you explained with the Ester funds, that is a grant. Um, but with open choice, we just want to clarify for the public that we do have the ability to um offset a position potentially or whatever the board chooses.
Correct. Currently, the level of reimbursement we, we get typically goes straight back out to pay our magnet school tuitions. So that's why you don't see a whole lot of impact right now, but that possibly is why the governor put it in his budget because he recognizes that if you want people to do their participation, increase their participation, you've got to make it desirable.
Thank you for clarifying that. Um, I guess that's it for now. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Yoppa.
Hi, I have a question for Dr. Brummett, if that's okay. Dr. Fletcher?
Go ahead.
Um, Dr. Brummett, I know the town, I, I know we had put aside, or you had put aside one point five million dollars for the um, to fix the roof and the town decided to step in and pay for that. What did we do with that money that we put aside?
I'll absolutely feel that. I'm not aware of one point five million for a roof. Or is that what was spent last summer, Lou?
For the roof? I got, it was too muffled. I couldn't understand what.
She wasn't, she was of the understanding, Miss Yoppa was of the understanding that we had one point five million dollars earmarked for the, the high school roof. Uh, my recollection is different than that. We had
Right, we had.
Quite a bit less than that.
Two hundred thousand in each of the twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one year and the twenty-one-twenty-two year for a total four hundred thousand dollars. That was essentially taken and used to do two sections of the roof. That was essentially taken and used to do two sections of the roof, um, on, uh, the, our area and the STEM area at the high school.
And the town, I think, kicked in.
About 60,000.
60,000.
Right. The.
So the town only kicked in 60,000 dollars total?
Last summer, yes. Now, fast forward to this year, they have, through the capital budget as well as what's currently happening, Lou, I'll let you speak to that.
Right. Uh, the price estimates to finish the entire roof are right around 2 and a half million dollars at the high school. Town managers informed us their goal is to try to get the entire roof done this year, uh, in this, uh, construction season. Obviously, we're still vulnerable to any issues with supply chains, uh, that are out there and, um, uh, you know, I'm not party to the contract, so I'm not exactly sure what provisions are in it as far as, um, you know, if there's a significant increase in the cost of materials, is the vendor going to absorb that or can they come back to the town for additional funds? I don't have any insight to offer in that area, but, uh, I had put together the, um, estimate package for this, uh, town manager a few weeks ago, month ago at this point, and, you know, we were up over 2.5 million dollars to do the whole job at this point.
Okay, so my question is, Lou, if that's okay, so we, we handle facilities, correct? So therefore we knew these repairs were going to be needed. Do we put any money aside for these repairs?
Roof repairs, yes, we have that in our operating budget every year for the, um, small issues that occur building by building, where we spring a leak someplace, have to send the repair crew out, uh, to do that. But those are just spot repairs, they're not anything of significant magnitude.
So we're still relying on the town to pay for things of, uh, significant magnitude? Is that what you're saying, even though we handle facilities?
We have a combination of resources. We have the Board of Ed CIP account, which is available for us to tap into and plan for. Uh, in the plan, at this point, the town manager had made his, uh, feelings known last year that he wanted to champion a significant roof replacement projects across town so they could install solar power plants on the roofs at the end of that. You know, you really have, can only put a solar power plant up on a roof that's less than 10 years old realistically because the, uh, risk of deterioration in leaks would require us as the property owner to take apart the system, take, take it offline so you could do this, a substantial repair or replacement and pay penalty charges to the solar company for taking their plant offline for however long that goes. So, uh, some of our roofs are not in condition to receive a solar power plant. The high schools it is right now is not, you know, you have, we have to get through doing all this to put a substantive power plant in place. You know, you know, we have, uh, the last major series of roofs we've done, was it John Patterson before this? That school is in a position to accept a solar power plant. That is planned for sometime in the fall of 2022 to come online. Uh, but that's a yearly time from when they made their initial plan. So if the work at the high school gets done, say by October and finished, uh, this year, uh, realistically in the fall of 2023, if the town chooses to pursue that, uh, direction, you know, we would be able to start seeing the possibility of a solar power plant in place on the roof.
And if I could further clarify, the, um, we requested that roof money within our capital.
Yes.
The way it sorted, when the capital budget was finalized by the town manager, he put all of that on the town side. I don't believe we saw any roof money on the board's side. But when we spoke to him about the condition of the high school roof and it sprung a leak, as everyone knows, he indicated that it was his intention to then utilize that money that's sitting on the town's side to replace the roofs that are in bad shape at the high school, which is a good chunk of them. So that, I, I can appreciate the confusion along that line, it didn't come into our side, but we've been assured that he intends to, because we don't have any roof money on our side, uh, he intends to utilize that roof replacement fund that is sitting in a town, a town budget line.
Um, I got a quick question for Lou.
Just hold on just a moment, okay? Uh, I, it, was there somebody else here that had to hand up? Go ahead.
It says about this.
Okay, just go. Thank you, thank you. Hey, thank you, Dr. Fletcher, I'm just going to go. Okay, I have, is it okay if I make a comment and then ask a question?
Yeah.
Okay, so my first comment is like, I keep hearing like, we gave back 1.5 million to the town and, and we shouldn't have done that. But when we gave it back to the town, right, when we give it back to the town, the town does do things like pay for our roofs or they gave us money for buses or like, so it's, yes, we're giving money back, but it's not like the town's like, woo-hoo, I'm just going to take it and like run away with it. So, you know, and I always said even back when I was on the board last time, like, it would be so awesome if we just had one big budget. And I know we can't because of state statutes, but like, so I, I want to get away from us being like, well, we gave it to the town and then it, and they're not doing anything with it because that's not going to make for a nice, you know, we're not going to get along nicely. So I think we need to keep in mind like, yes, we gave back 3 million dollars the last couple of years. However, we also are getting a roof and we also got a technology budget for the first time. And we also got a budget for the buses that we hadn't had before. So I want to just clarify that, that that's my feeling, it's just my feeling, but, but my question is.
She's, she's got the floor right now.
So my question is, I'm confused on what brought us down from the 3.6 to the 2.4. What did we cut? Like, how did we get from 3.6 to 2.4? Was it literally just we're taking money from the non-lapsing? Or did we cut something that I missed?
You didn't miss a thing.
I'm confused.
The board heard tonight our recommendation, make myself a lose recommendation, that we recommend using the non-lapsing fund. The board could, although I strongly advise against it, reopen the budget and try to find a couple more rolls of toilet paper to cut, but I don't think there's anything in there to cut that wouldn't dramatically impact programming.
Can I answer your questions?
It does, thank you.
Ms. Paradi?
Yeah, I just, um, just on the give back thing, the only reason that I brought it up is because somebody said that the Board of Ed doesn't give back. It wasn't that I didn't think we should, or that the town doesn't do the appropriate thing with it because they're obviously giving us money for the next year's budget. Um, it was more of comments have been made everywhere, that saying like, we're hoarding money and we're, you know, have secret stashes or we're like, just not doing the right thing, which is if there is a surplus, giving it back, putting, obviously funding the non-lapsing because that's within our right to do so. Um, but, you know, and there has been giving back. So it wasn't that I wasn't, I wasn't saying like, we shouldn't be giving any money back and we should just spend everything. It was that people are saying the board is doing that when that's not true.
Can I respond?
Go ahead.
All righty. Well, because I'm supposed to ask you first, Robert's rules, I asked you.
And I'm, I'm saying, go ahead.
It's okay, I was told ahead of time, I was, I was spoon- fed it, that's how I was supposed to ask things. Um, it wasn't, it was not just, and I want to clarify because I think we have a good working relationship around this table. It wasn't, it was like you said something, Sam said something, I, like, I don't think you said something, but like, I'm hearing it, I see it on Facebook, like, I see it on social media. I just want to clarify, like, we're trying to build a relationship with the town. So I just wanted to clarify that they absolutely have given us funding in other ways other than our operating budget. So it was not about you, so.
Okay, so I got to go back on, Mr. Sharma, uh, had his hand raised for a while, yep.
For Sam.
Um, just a quick question for Lou. Um, so, so the, the roof, the high school roof is going to be 2.5 million, that, that's the estimate?
Correct.
And so, you know, in the last two years, based on what you said, we gave back the town 3 mil. Um, so how much, so who's going to pay for the two, who's going to pay like basically 2.5 mil, right? So how, how much?
Town will be paying for it, yeah, the town will be paying for it through their capital improvement plan.
Okay, so the, so the whole 2.5 million?
I didn't, the whole, yeah. Yeah, the town's paying the entire amount. Yeah, I believe they have a little over 3 million dollars of resources in that account.
Okay, um, ano- another question is like, how much did we lose out? Like on funding we could have got, we could have got from the state to replace the roof because we basically our roofs, our roofs too old?
Yes, we looked at that, uh, very closely. You know, the first time we did it, August a year ago in 2020, at 2020, uh, when we did the, uh, pricing, it came out at 500,000 dollars for about an 8,700 square foot area. By just replacing the roof as is and bypassing the grant, that cost was about 200,000. So even though we would have been eligible for a 57% grant, the net cost of the town would still have been higher pursuing it through, uh, the grant program as well as the time and the expediency of getting the work done. You know, we've had to go through the entire, um, grant evaluation process, uh, going through formal funding, uh, at the, um, uh, Department of Administrative Services to get that grant commitment. And you couldn't start until you had all those things in place. So we were probably added nine to 12 months before we could have even gotten that much done and just been forced to, you know, continue with a compromised roof. So this was definitely a win-win for us, no questions about it.
So the bottom line is the town has picked up the tab?
Yes.
That is true.
Right. The town is paying for the roof.
So, so the 57% grant that we could have got from the state, why, why did we not pursue it? Because we were not eligible or why, why would we not do that?
Right. To start with, uh, the cost in a grant environment would have been 500,000 dollars. Presuming nothing was excluded and you would have gotten a 57% grant, you would have gotten somewhere in the vicinity of 280,000 dollars back from the state. So the net cost for the project would have been, uh, 220,000 dollars. By going direct to the company, get the town manager, getting the, uh, bid waiver from the town council, our net cost was 200,000 dollars plus the acceleration of time. So it ended up being net cheaper than, uh, being able to go through the grant process and as well as picking up at least six to 12 months of, uh, a higher performing roof compared to the compromised roof we had.
So, so the grant from the state was only worth, what, 500,000 or something, that's it?
No, 57% of the cost that's qualified, right? And I'm just presuming the whole thing would have been qualified, that's not necessarily going to be the case. They typically find ways to exclude 10% or more of the cost because it doesn't fit with the regulations. So that was the best case scenario I presented.
Yeah, so that makes sense, yeah, thanks, Lou.
Okay. All right, Ms. Yop, did you have another question?
Uh, yes, I did. So I, just, I'm just concerned a little bit and I was listening, um, to what Sam said about grant money and things like that. I, I, I just want to ask a realistic question. I mean, I am not an expert in facilities. Is this something that the board, and I'm just going to ask, and you guys obviously can say how you feel as well. I mean, is this something that it seems like we can handle? I mean, we're missing out on some grant opportunities, the roofs are, I mean, they're going to leak, but there's always an issue. And it seems like most of our budget is going towards this. I mean, I want to focus on the students, the test scores, I mean, the math scores. I mean, I know it's a huge part of our budget, but I mean, is this something that we think we can handle? Is, is that wrong to ask?
Yeah.
I personally think that, that we would need to always have a vested interest in our facilities. We are in them day in and day out. We understand what the educational environment needs to be like. We aren't missing out on any grant opportunities. I think the confusion is that when you apply for a state grant, you have to do certain, uh, specs, so on and so forth, which make the cost of the roof higher, that we found out last summer. Just to do a regular roof replacement is a lot cheaper than having to go through all the bells and whistles that the state makes you put through because they, uh, they want you to do other things and kind of substantially modify the roof. We didn't lose the grant money, it just made no sense to apply for the grant money because we would have spent more money in the long haul. Um, I believe Lou and his team have done a fantastic job keeping our facilities in good stead. Uh, always an eye for the educational aspects, like a 3K playground most recently. So, um, you know, I think for us to always have a seat at the facilities table will be very important.
Okay, does everybody understand that now? Is it clear? Right, it was not feasible to go for the grants, fiscally irresponsible. We all understand that the town has picked up the tab for all of the roofs, okay? So we can say thank you to the town. All right, so, uh, I, I think we can probably put this topic to bed. No?
Mine's different.
Go ahead.
Mine was just, yeah, um, mine was just about the open choice legislation when it goes, sorry, my. Mine was just about open choice legislation really quick, if that's okay. That's, okay, um, uh, and thank you for all of this discourse and for summing it up, Dr. Fletcher. Um, one of my questions just about the open choice was, um, and, and to clarify too, when we budget, we budget with that in mind, so you had talked about this, I know from the beginning, but we budget anticipating that it necessarily won't go through. I think that was the mindset of all of us to, to anticipate hope, but not, you know. Um, but I guess my question is the, uh, effective date, so pending that passage, when it becomes effective, it is for the 2022, 23 or 23, 24?
Next school year.
So 2022, 23, okay. Just wanted to clarify, thank you.
All right, we have a lot to think about, okay? So when we come back in two weeks, we will, we will take this up and it'll become an action item, okay? So at this time, I'm going to move on to, uh, agenda item G, which is public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities. Um, you can call in, the phone number is 860-665-8659. And we do limit your civil participation to three minutes. If you are online, just raise your hand. I don't see any visitors in the room. Give it just a couple of minutes and I'm sure that there are some board members that have closing comments that you want to make.
Motion to adjourn.
Go ahead, Richard.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Fletcher. Um, I want to talk about something other than the budget, if that's okay. Um, today, I had the pleasure of meeting with Governor Laot and Dr. Bremett at the high school. Um, one of the things that, he mumbled as he was walking by and said, oh, hey, Board of Ed, we're doing, you're doing a lot of good stuff today. Is CRT on the, uh, on it coming up? And I said, no, it's coming up next. So I just want to address something, we had a presentation a couple of weeks ago, wherein, uh, we talked about the focus on the fairness of outcome. And I do think that that's noble on its base, but I do think that it is a little bit inherently discriminatory. But, um, beginning of term, we have a vote on goals, I was the only board member to ask, hey, I have a lot of goals that I agree with. Um, I think that we need to be focusing more on equality of opportunity as opposed to, well, fairness of outcome. Our constitution, uh, we have our declaration, eventually we have, uh, you know, we hold these truths, be all self, that all men, all people are created equal. Martin Luther King said that we should be defined, uh, we should not be, uh, judged by color, our skin, content, or our character. I think that we have an overemphasis on so-called privilege. Um, it presupposes information by characteristics of students and other people that, uh, they don't have control over, that's not fair. It assumes students of so-called, uh, privilege have some, uh, lesser needs and it prejudges the students that are supposedly marginalized, that they're, that they're with marginalized voices, that they're oppressed and, uh, that they require more than others. I don't agree with that. Um, I am pleased, um, at the goal that was presented in the presentation at the previous board meeting, that we need to meet all students' needs, I completely agree with that 100%. Uh, it's right down to the all caps on the word, huh? Um, I believe that the new to public schools is acting within the best interests and acting within, uh, with best intentions. And I think that we should strive for fairness, uh, and just outcomes. However, I do feel, uh, that we should redefine our goals to place a greater emphasis on equality as opposed to equity. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other board members have a comment or closing remarks?
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor say aye. All opposed, sorry. Go home. Hey, Danielle?
Yes.
Beth, I need to see you guys for a minute.
Sure.